We're ready to go. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the hearing tonight. It's December 7th and it's Wednesday. We have several items on today's agenda. So before we get into the reason why I'm sure most of you are here, Mr. Clerk, why don't we go through our consent calendar? I think those are items two through seven. If you could read those and then we could just roll.
Certainly. Item number two is designation of persons or organizations to write arguments for and against the March 7th, 2017 ballot measure related to cannabis regulation after citizen input, taxation, and enforcement, Proposition M. Item number three is designation of persons or organizations to write arguments for and against the March 7th, 2017 ballot measure related to a proposed initiative regarding cannabis activity permits, regulation, and taxation, Initiative Ordinance N. Item number four is designation of persons or organizations to write arguments for and against the March 7th, 2017 ballot measure related to a proposed charter amendment changing the maximum term of harbor department leases, Charter Amendment P. Item number five is designation of persons or organizations to write arguments for and against the March 7th, 2017 ballot measure relative to a proposed initiative establishing a building moratorium, restrictions on general plan amendments, and required review of the general plan, Initiative Ordinance S. Item number six is Chief Legislative Analyst Report relative to the proposed 2017 council recess schedule. Item number seven is motion Wesson, Englander, Martinez relative to establishing regular council meetings in the Van Nuys City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We do have a quorum. I'm joined by Committee Member Marquise Harris-Dawson on the items that you just read, items two through seven. Without objection, we will deem these items approved. Now, did you not indicate who we were actually designating?
Uh, no, sir. Those names would need to be...
So you want me to do that?
Correct.
Oh, man, I'm telling you. Okay, so we're on, uh, thank you, Andrew, for that. So on item two, we will designate Craig Lally as the author on Prop M. On item three, we'll designate Carrie Randolph as the author on Ordinance O. And Craig Lally again will be the author against N. So it's Ordinance N, and that's Ms. Randolph, and Lally will be against that. And then on item four, we'll designate Councilmember Joe Buscaino as the author for Charter Amendment P. On five, we'll designate Michael Weinstein as the author of Ordinance S. And Rusty Hicks will be the author against S. And then on item six, we'll adopt the CLA report. And on seven, we will adopt the motion. So with that said, without objection, these items will be deemed approved. Okay, so anyway, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. This will be our last hearing this year. I want to thank all of you who have participated. We've had several hearings earlier this year. And we plan on having a few more as we go into the new year. I know we're gonna try to schedule a meeting on the East Side sometime in January. We want to make sure we kind of hopscotch around the city of LA, afford individuals the opportunity to come and give remarks, or just to listen to see what's going on. So anyway, with that said, I think I want to ask the CLA or CAO to come up, give us a quick, a quick report. Today, we're gonna have a panel conversation made up primarily, or is it of all neighborhood council or community people? Okay, before we get started, I'm going to call up Lisa Sark. So what I'm gonna do, Mr. Harris-Dawson, we did have some cards on some of the items that we've approved, so I'll ask that you support me. And you can stay there and reconsidering these items. So we'll reconsider two, three, four. What else is here? Seven, six. And I'm gonna call, I have a couple of members from the public. So on item seven, can I get Lisa Sarkin, please, come forward? You get one minute?
Make one sentence.
Go ahead.
This one, I hope you're gonna do it. We should have more meetings here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler, you have cards on items two through seven. I'm gonna give you two minutes on these items.
The puppet will speak, yeah.
Just thank you. Thank you for not violating the state law. Now, we're all here to talk about marijuana. But before we talk about marijuana, we want to talk about...
Would you get on the issue, man?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just really excited about...
No, just, no, no, no. Look, you stay on the issues, all right? Items two through six. So control yourself, and I'll control the puppet, all right? Now, go on and finish.
That's a good deal. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Now, on the other items, I don't think Craig Lally, Lolly Pop Lally should be the one doing the ballot, because he's the president of the L.A. Police Protective League. I think he's too much of an insider to write the ballot proposal against. So I think instead Sergeant Parker should be the one designated to write that, because he understands City Hall better than most officers these days. Now, as far as Van Nuys, yeah, this is a great place to hold meetings on a regular basis. Let's hold two of them a month, and we could do this every other week. And I know that people like, for example, Joe Buscaino would love to drive here twice a month to come here, because he loves to go up that drive. He enjoys driving his car, like I do. So yes, we agree with more Van Nuys meetings. It's good to be here, and it's good that everybody comes out here and supports the puppet. So again, yes, on all the items except don't have Lally, have Parker write that designation. And now, we can get back to talking about marijuana. Thank you.
Okay, now, I have this, the CLA, CAO, why don't you guys go through a report? In fact, before you start, if anybody here would like to speak on this item, please do not hesitate to, to fill out a card, and I'll try to get, so we have been successful in getting to everyone that has filled out a card. I'm optimistic we'll be able to do the same thing tonight.
And, Mr. Chair, would you like item one read into the record?
I think, you know what, what I want to do, I want to, again, on the items that we had on reconsideration, we'll deem those approved, and we'll close the hearing on those items, all right? Okay, so with that said, let's, yeah, you go ahead and read the item.
Sure. Item number one is motion Wesson, Corritz, Martinez, et al., and City Administrative Officer and Chief Legislative Analyst joint reports relative to Proposition D, Medical Cannabis Dispensaries and the Adult Use of Marijuana Act.
Thank you. And some of you who come to all of the meetings, this, some of this might be a little repetitive. But for new folk that are here, we want them to get a feel for, you know, the report that's been done. And so it won't take that long. So if you guys could just go ahead and begin.
Okay, good evening, Committee members. Mathias Farfan for the Chief Legislative Analyst Office, joined here with Jason Colleen from the CAO's office. And we'll just provide a quick PowerPoint on policy options for cannabis regulations, which is just the background of where we're at on state law as well, options available for the city, as well as some report backs that we've presented to committee in the past. Starting off with the first slide is background. On November 5th, 1996, California enacted Prop 215 and became the first state to establish a medical marijuana program. In May 20 of 2013, the city enacted Prop D to provide an enforcement and regulatory framework for medical marijuana dispensaries in the absence of state regulation. In 2015, the state enacted MCRSA, which is the Medical Cannabis Regulation Safety Act. MCRSA recognizes a large range of medical marijuana businesses, MMVs, such as cultivation, product manufacturing, distribution and transportation, testing laboratories, and dispensaries. On November 8, 2016, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA for short, generally legalizes the cultivation, possession, and use of recreational marijuana by adults 21 years and over. Going to the next slide, provides a brief summary of the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MCRSA. MCRSA requires medical marijuana businesses to obtain a state license and local license permit in order to operate lawfully within California, which means that an operator would need to obtain a local license prior to obtaining a state license. MCRSA divides state licensing and enforcement responsibilities among three agencies. The first one is the Department of Food and Agriculture, which will issue medical marijuana cultivation licenses. The Department of Consumer Affairs will issue licenses for medical marijuana dispensaries, distributors, and transporters. And third, the Department of Public Health, which will issue licenses for medical marijuana manufacturers and testing laboratories. The next slide provides a brief summary of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA. AUMA's passage legalizes recreational marijuana throughout the state and allows the city, at its sole discretion, to institute a licensing system for cultivation, manufacturing, processing, distribution, and testing of marijuana. AUMA allows the sale of recreational slash adult-use marijuana by state-licensed retailers only, and the state will not begin issuing licenses until 2018. Additionally, a marijuana-related business cannot get a state license if it is breaking local laws. And AUMA does not contain a dual licensing requirement. MRBs can apply for a state license without having to show proof of compliance with local
Both MCRSA as well as AUMA maintain local control over marijuana dispensaries. The city has a permissive zoning code, which basically prohibits all uses that are not an enumerated use. Given the fact that marijuana sales are not an enumerated use, if the city wishes to allow for both medical and recreational dispensaries to continue to operate when the state licensing system goes into place in 2018, the city would have to adopt a regulatory framework. Which gets us to the regulatory framework. The city has multiple options to establish a framework for regulating all aspects of the marijuana-cannabis industry. The city has the option of allowing some or all such businesses through some form of local regulatory permit or license system. And then the third option, of course, is an express ban. The city may opt to ban all our specific activities within the marijuana-related business structure.
Thank you.
And then, our offices have produced seven report backs ranging from issues requiring an environmental analysis to social justice and equity issues. If your committee has any questions related to those report backs, we're here to answer them.
Okay, thank you both. So I'd like to ask the two of you to kind of hang out, hang around. We may need, there may be a question or two for you later. And I want to say to the folk that are here, we want to have at least two, maybe three more hearings. We hope to try to bring in representatives from other states so that they can give us a feel, other states that have already legalized this product. We want to get a feel for how they deal with it. Maybe we have a hearing so that we can hear from law enforcement, and then also one that deals with public health concerns, where we can bring in representatives from the public health community and have them, you know, give us their thoughts. So at this time, what I'd like to do is call up representatives from the neighborhood councils. You know, I want to take advantage of this opportunity to have you talk about, you know, your concerns, things that are happening in your neighborhood, because we have industry folk here, and I'd like for them to really get a feel for some of the things that community people really care about. So if I could call up Doug from my district, from Soro, and Mary, did Rita get here yet? Did Rita get here yet, Andrew? Okay. And Matt and Nate, so Nate Johnson, Matt Garland, Rita Villa, Mary Garcia, Doug Fitzsimmons, why don't you come up? We'll just have to kind of move the, share the, the mic.
There used to be five.
And we need one more. Yeah, I really want to thank you guys for coming out. I know some of you have come from far away, and traffic was a challenge. So again, I want to thank you all. And so what, but I want you to view this as just a real free-wheeling, you know, conversation, no clock. You should say whatever's on, on your mind. Does anybody want to volunteer to go first, or then why don't you?
Okay.
Okay, just grab the mic.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I have a prepared statement.
Go right ahead.
I wrote it on the freeway, so you'll have to forgive me if I've had any errors.
I hope you weren't driving while you were there.
No, someone else was driving. Okay, so last year, U.S. legal use of marijuana...
You know what, you should, for the record, state your name and affiliation and all that good stuff.
My name is Rita Villa, and I am with the Studio City Neighborhood Council. I'm the Secretary of the Council and the Chair of their Government Affairs Committee.
Thank you.
And I am here speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Council tonight. Last year, U.S. legal use of marijuana was a 5.4 billion business, and that figure's expected to quadruple by 2020. According to one estimate, the industry and supporting businesses already employ between 100,000 and 150,000 people in the United States. California's recent vote to legalize recreational marijuana, in addition to our already legal medical marijuana, has created the world's largest legal marijuana market. Our goal should be to ensure that the city of Los Angeles positions itself to garner a significant portion of that business, generating revenue and jobs for our economy. The regulatory framework should be established in an open and transparent process in an expedition man, an expeditious manner. Yesterday, the Plum Committee requested a report including data on the impact of Prop D with respect to the distribution of dispensaries throughout the city. This is an important first step in the process. An overriding concern in the development of any regulation is that such regulations are enforceable and that they are enforced. Regulations without meaningful penalties for the failure to comply with the regulations and an adequate budget to enable such enforcement is pointless. Immediate action should be taken to ensure that Prop D compliant businesses be issued some form of license or permit so that they'll be able to qualify for state license when they become available in January 2018. Additionally, compliance with Prop D should be enforced. The regulatory framework should also be developed in such a way that we ensure that not only is there equal access in the permitting process for all interested stakeholders, but that priority be given to those that are already here and who have worked hard to achieve the legalization of this business. Additionally, provision should be incorporated to ensure that small businesses and minorities are able to enter the market, such as the adoption of cottage licenses as provided for in the state law. Los Angeles is a large and diversified city composed of many unique neighborhoods. Development of land use requirements should take this into account. The regulatory framework should provide every community a way to restrict the number and type of marijuana businesses in their area. This could be done by requiring neighborhood council input in the permitting process. Licenses should be given based upon location and should not travel with the owner. There are several distinct types of marijuana businesses, including cultivation, manufacture, dispensing, distribution, and transportation. Licensing for each of these business segments should be distinct. Consideration must be given to the impact of vertical integration within the industry. The number of segments a business can be licensed to operate in should probably be limited. Cultivation and manufacture of marijuana should be restricted to agricultural and commercial zones, and compliance with proper regulations such as OSHA requirements should be required. Provisions defining the proximity to other sensitive land uses for each type of marijuana business should be distinct. Obviously, this is a complex matter, but I believe those enumerated above are fundamental to the development of a regulatory framework. Thank you for listening.
Now, I want to thank you, and I want to say, thank the Studio City Neighborhood Council. That's a lot of work that you put into it, and I want you to know that Mr. Harris-Dawson and I really appreciate it. I mean, the purpose of these conversations is to make sure that people participate, that their concerns are voiced, that you get to understand, industry folk, they get to understand you. And if I can't get the community people to get engaged, it's really difficult for me to do that. So that, a lot of work went into that.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm just gonna have to, let's say, where's the security? I want to make sure she is not driving. I'm not sure, yeah, I want to see. You might write a novel on the way going home. Doug, why don't I call on you, since you are...
Sure.
...from the district that I represent and a dear friend, so let me just...
My name is Doug Fitzsimmons. I'm president of the South Robertson Neighborhood Council. I'm also Chair of the West Side Regional Alliance of Councils. My Neighborhood Council's been dealing with this from pretty much the beginning. I think we had an early conversation with the council president about the impact of illegal dispensaries in our area. At one point, we had six pharmacies in South Robertson and 20 medical marijuana dispensaries, the vast majority of which, 17 out of 20, were illegal, non-Ico. With help of the city attorney, we were able to pare that down, but not before my Neighborhood Council was threatened with lawsuits, with personal lawsuit by the illegal dispensary operators. We had situations where one would get shut down, another would reopen in its place. There was a revolving door for a while. I've testified at many city hearings on this issue, but through it all, I saw it really as a land use issue. An issue where we weren't putting in place, for a number of reasons, mainly legal reasons, the infrastructure, the regulatory framework that we needed to make these businesses successful, policeable, and good partners with our community. So, you know, through all that, even saying it now, my position should be, you know, let's not have this in our city. But, you know, I've also talked with extensively many, many operators in the city of the pre-Ico's that are in it for the long haul, that want to have marijuana dispensaries, you know, growing operations, distribution, be a positive part of this, of the city. And I think that we can do that. I'm still optimistic, after all that my NC has gone through. But we have to approach it with trust, with cooperation. We shouldn't, in my opinion, look at this as a punitive exercise. I know there are people out there who just, on principle, don't approve of marijuana, but, you know, it's here, and we're gonna have to deal with it. The process that we went through with Prop D was painful, and I'm hoping that we can get through that sort of, avoid that sort of public circus with this time around. And there are things, and I'm happy to see that the city council is putting together a proposition before the voters that allows flexibility in setting those rules. The opposing measure baking it all into our charter, I think, is a, is a poor approach. I think our experiences with dispensaries so far has proven that we need to be able to change as, as this brand-new industry evolves. For example, sensitive uses. I mean, we have a pretty broad brush on sensitive uses right now. I think if you stop and actually look at what we're considering a sensitive use, there are some that may not actually make sense there, particularly in an environment where consumption is not allowed on premises. So, you know, I'm interested to hear what my fellow panels have to say, and I'm looking forward to a, a good back-and-forth discussion with, with you all.
Okay, well, good. And again, I appreciate you coming out. But Mr. Harris-Dawson, it was, it was Doug in Soro, the first Neighborhood Council in the community that I represent, that I want to say began my education process, because we spent a lot of time, I want to say, maybe at one point, they had knocked on every door of every, you know, to identify every dispensary in their, their region. And again, I learned a lot. But I'd like, before I call on the next speaker, if you could just take a minute and talk, because you referenced working with the city attorney's office...
Yes.
...and how challenging it was. And maybe if you just spend a minute talking about that, so the other people that are here can get a feel for what the Neighborhood Council, what the community had, had to go through. So if you would share a couple of those stories.
So I'm hoping we're, we're through this period, but when the city was trying to pull together its regulations, it was hampered by the fact that there were a number of lawsuits in Los Angeles and in Long Beach and other areas within the state that seemed to curtail the city's ability to regulate dispensaries. And so we would get close to putting laws in place, and then a ruling would come down, or a ruling would be pending, and we'd take two steps backwards. It was frustrating, frustrating for the city attorney's office, frustrating for the Neighborhood Councils, and impossible to explain to, to our constituents. They demanded action. They were not willing to hear excuses, even if they were for the best of reasons. So again, I'm hoping that if we approach this in a cooperative way, we can build the trust to avoid some of those lawsuits this time around, and certainly the state...
Did you work at all directly with some of the dispensaries, Doug? And if so, share, how did that go?
We actually have three pre-Ico dispensaries in, in Soro, which is about 40, 45,000-person area. And I have to say, to a, with maybe minor complaints, each of the pre-Ico dispensaries were willing to work with the community, act in good faith, and were pretty much above board in, in the way we dealt with them. And I've since grown to know a number of other... And I've since grown to know a number of other dispensary owners who were exactly the same way. That said, the illegal dispensaries were a different story. At one point, we had three illegal dispensaries on three corners of, at the end of my street, actually. And that sort of clustering was devastating for our community. They, aside from being illegal, they were also just generally bad actors. At one point, we had one paint a billboard on the side of a synagogue next door. It was, and of course, I mentioned the lawsuits.
Okay. All right, who wants to go next? Okay, just grab a mic and identify yourself. I do remember you from the last hearing.
All right, thanks. For those of you who don't remember me, my name is Matt Garland, and I'm with the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, chairman of the Ad Hoc Committee on Marijuana Regulatory Framework, which is a great long title. And just a personal introduction, I'm really new to public policy and all this kind of environment, so thank you very much for this conversation, because one thing I've noticed in doing this is that this is sorely needed, these kind of conversations and public input. There's a real lack of education between the public and the government and the industry. There's a lot of fear in the public realm. They don't know what Prop 64 meant, they don't know what these business owners are trying to achieve, and so thank you very much for this. That being said, I wanted to say that all of the dispensary owners that I've been meeting in this endeavor, like you said, all the pre-Ico ones, have been very much on board with the community stewardship, which I think is a great thing, and I want to encourage all of these good actors to keep up the good dialogue with us and thank them. So, thank you. And wanted to read you a little prepared statement also.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt.
I feel so unprepared for this. I should have written something.
I know. Well, our committee wrote up this draft, and it hasn't been passed at the neighborhood council level, so just keep in mind that it's a draft. But our committee focus in cannabis regulation is on community stewardship and family safety. The impact of rogue shops and gray market operators is the enrichment of organized crime, diversion to youth, inconsistent and unsafe patient access, nuisance complaints, and the erosion of trust between the community, the cannabis industry, and enforcement authorities. Sorry.
Take your time.
Thanks. Some of the main concerns I've noticed in my community from people that are uncomfortable with this industry are that they want to see guardrails provided for youth exposure, they want to see local accountability and transparency from regulations and the industry, they're really concerned with presentation of businesses, retail, and the location of retail businesses, and community reinvestment. And all of the things you said, Rita and Doug, are all of the things we embrace too. The small business support, the cottage industry, those are ways to keep this industry thinking about community stewardship. You know, if we don't overburden them with too many regulations, we're gonna keep these good actors in place, so, thank you.
Hey, Matt, can I ask you a couple quick, couple quick questions?
Yes.
When did your neighborhood council decide that it was important enough to form an ad hoc committee or a committee to oversee?
That's a great question. They decided in the November meeting to form the committee. I went to, San Pedro's a small town with three neighborhood councils, and I'm a stakeholder in all three, and I went to all three board meetings and talked about this issue, and asked them to support small business and family safety. And what I found was that most of the, most of the board members didn't even know where to start with this issue. They didn't have the energy or the background knowledge to even start talking about it. And so, the president of Central, Mona Sutton, called me on the phone and asked if I, as a stakeholder, would take this on and chair the committee, and I really appreciate the opportunity, but as you can see, I'm really nervous, so...
Now, don't be.
Thanks, okay.
Hey, by the time this is over, you'll just be calm, cool, and correct.
All right, good, I'm looking forward to that.
Because it's just a regular, easy conversation. We just happen to have 200 people here, you know, it's no, no big, no big deal, but...
Yes, good evening. My name is Mary Garcia.
Hi, Mary.
Hi. I'm from Midtown North Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm not here representing them, we have not had the discussion, but we have had dialogue separately about this one here and this one there, and they're cropping up even more so now, I guess it's just, it was a matter of time. And we have, for instance, one that's going to be taking over a space that was a restaurant, and I would say it's about 2,000 square feet. It's going to be quite large, and it, it's kind of spooky. We already have a small one across the street, we have quite a few in North Hollywood. North Hollywood's a pretty big district, but I was recalling one that came before us, the Planning and Land Use Meeting some time ago, and he gave us an address, and it was at a corner, and so one of my board members said, "I'm gonna send that address to my wife and see exactly where that is," because there was another shop half a block away. So as it turned out, it was adjacent, it was part of a gas station and a little shop next to the gas station, so, you know, we visualized this as a butt in the hat and a buttered the hand, you know, Budweiser and a butt and blah, blah. It was kind of comical, but these guys were really serious, and they were really upset that we turned it down. I guess that with some neighborhood councils, you know, we, we don't want to disappoint, of course, and so we did say no to this fellow, and he walked away, he came with someone that was, he was in real estate, actually. So, but with us, we have so many, and you don't really know how many we even have, they come and they go, and that's distressing to me, because I do walk through the neighborhood. I like to walk, and I can tell you that I can smell it getting there and going way past. So, but the upside of what is going to happen, hopefully, is this, I, what Rita said is, and that's a beautiful statement, I must say, about the taxes on this, the money to be made. You know, this is a very positive thing, and I see the uses for this money for homeless people and children, and all of those positive things that we want for our communities and for their future. So for me, I can't deny this. I have not spoken with my neighborhood council. As I said, I'm freely here of my own, you know, my own person.
And we're glad you are.
Thank you. So, if, if indeed, you know, the monies can be directed positively to those areas, then I don't see anyone. And also, you know, that you have to, of course, you know, have guidelines, and if they abide by these guidelines and, and we make this not an illegal use anymore, but a positive way for everyone, and of course medically, I see this, I have friends, or a friend or two that have cancer, and of course, they utilize this. So, so I'm for all of these suggestions, and one of my main suggestions is that we focus on where those taxes are going to be going.
Okay, thank you. You know, let me ask you, Mary, does it make sense maybe when you go back to your next neighborhood council meeting that you suggest or recommend that, that they figure out a way as a neighborhood council to tackle this issue?
Yes.
Either like, Matt, you know, start some kind of ad hoc of the planning, I would imagine most of the neighborhood councils have a planning committee, so why don't, when you go back, you know, see if they would be, there would be an interest in that? I do think that the quicker that the neighborhood councils really gear up and put a couple of folk in, I don't want to say in charge, but a couple of folk on this
Yes.
...so that they could do a lot of legwork for the neighborhood councils and give you reports or what have you. I don't, I think that this is something we're gonna have to deal, something we're going to be dealing with for a while, so it makes sense to me that the neighborhood councils begin having conversations amongst themselves about, about ways in which they can, can, can educate themselves and ways in which they can be engaged with the providers. It was not too long ago, and I don't see her here, but I was at Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, and one of the folk came and gave a presentation. So it's like she's trying to cultivate a relationship, so I think we're gonna all have to coexist, we're gonna have to all live together, so we all need to get to know each other and try to build a level of trust. But I thank you for coming, and we, you know, we're gonna go on to Nate and have you, you know, identify yourself and say where you're from, and then I'm gonna see if Mr. Harris Dawson has some more questions, I have some, and then we'll hear from the public, and I'm gonna ask you to kind of hang around, because maybe some of the things that they say, I might ask you to respond to as well. And since we've got, you know, Matt, you drove like 3,000 miles to get here, and Doug, you did 1,500, I think you can stick around and just stay until traffic dies down anyway. So with that said, Nate, and I, you know, appreciate you coming and the assistance that we always get from the downtown folk when we're trying to do hearings and meetings, so thank you for coming out.
Oh, sure thing, and we appreciate the opportunity as well. My name is Nate Johnson, I'm a member of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I'm chair of the Government Liaison Committee, which is where we considered this issue and gave us an opportunity to locate it from a broad regulatory perspective. I think most of the comments have hit on a lot of the things that we thought were important to the broad regulations in particular, where we're going to tax and make sure that we tax up and down the supply chain, sort of using the broad idea of medical marijuana businesses that was put forward in the CAO CLA report earlier. But there's a few things specific to downtown that I think are sort of important and could have some importance to how other neighborhood councils or other neighborhoods deal with dispensaries. And while I should, I guess, mention, we have submitted a community impact statement from Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I'm technically not here on behalf of the neighborhood council, though. I feel okay to report on some of the issues that we've addressed in our community impact statement. The first is, I'd like to reiterate the idea that it's important to incorporate neighborhood council input, and it seems like there's a pretty strong process available, similar to conditional use approvals for alcohol operations and dispensing alcohol operations. And if, when those approvals are sought by a medical or recreational marijuana business, I think it makes sense to have them come to the Planning Land Use Committees of different neighborhood councils or the neighborhood council itself, depending on that process, so at least they can get an idea of how the community feels about those sorts of dispensaries, what the history is, and they can facilitate communications, especially downtown, with the different business improvement districts, some other folks that are investing in those businesses, things like that. Another major issue for downtown is public consumption in a highly concentrated area, and there were some concerns expressed in our council, and I think it makes a lot of sense with so many different retail businesses and restaurants in the area, allowing someone just to smoke in public might create an issue with almost a nuisance with so much smoke around, it might create some issues with visitors or other tourists that come downtown. But at the same time, folks need an opportunity to be able to smoke recreationally, but especially medically, since it's a constitutional guarantee. So I think it might be important to consider the opportunity to smoke inside on-site where dispensing happens, to keep it constant, to keep the two things concentrated. And we've heard a presentation actually about a micro-permit idea, which I thought was sort of interesting, a bit like a microbrewery where there is some cultivation on-site as well as a sale, and then consumption on-site as well, which may keep the uses a little bit more restricted. We've also heard consistently from our Skid Row Central City East stakeholders that they do not want recreational medical marijuana businesses within the boundaries of Skid Row or Central City East. I think the idea of a prohibition in those areas contributes to considering Skid Row as an area of recovery more than an area of addiction, and even if recreational is legal, you know, medical is a constitutional right, it still contributes to this idea of it being a drug-abusing area rather than an area of recovery. I think generally that might be important as more permitive supportive housing is built around town with the passage of Proposition H and how closely dispensaries or other businesses should be toward more recovery-like areas like permanent supportive housing. And finally, I'd just be curious, as well as the neighborhood council downtown, what might be done with off-site signage, considering that downtown's a special sign district, and there was a state logist pass that allows large and potentially digital signs along the 110 freeway near LA Live? And what restrictions might be put in place or being considered for off-site signage? And thank you generally for the opportunity to comment.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, and then, Mr. Harris Dawson, just in a quick answer, black market, okay? I hear differing opinions, you know, some people believe that this is a way to reduce or eliminate the black market. In order to do that, you might have to have more outlets, I'll call them, I don't know what we're gonna eventually call them, but more outlets than proposed, and I was at a hearing that we had in our district, Doug, from some neighborhood council folk that talked about hours of operation. So if you're, if you're gonna go at the reduction of the black market, then you need to look at hours and numbers of outlets. What do you, you know, I don't know if you guys have talked about that yet, but see, these, it's gonna be important for you to share those thoughts, not just with this committee, but we're gonna have to share these things with the rest of the council, and this is your opportunity to really be engaged, so does anybody want to, okay, Matt, right? We'll start with you, and then we'll go around whoever wants to respond.
Thanks. Well, from the community safety and family safety standpoint, getting rid of the black market is, is I think crucial to what we're trying to do here, and any prohibition, and, yeah, I think that's gonna mean inclusive licensing, and I think that's gonna mean we need to license according to what the market can bear, so that we give an opportunity for the customers to purchase their cannabis legally, and that we give an opportunity for the black market operators to move over to the legal side of the business. And that way, these people can be licensed and held accountable and participate in community reinvestment, and that's all I have to say about it.
That's good. Anybody else want to jump in? Is that Mary?
Yes, I, I also, I had a thought about permits, you know, to do this, and I think that you have to be restrictive there, because if all of a sudden this opens up and you can have a shop on every block, that really won't help all the small, it just, it needs to be so many in a zip code or however you want to do that, but already I know that we have quite a few, quite a few, so it should be restricted to so many, to certain areas, however you want to divvy up the cities.
Okay, well, I want to, I want to hear from, from you guys. Doug, or did you want to jump in?
Yeah, if I could just chime in, I think the point about trying to shut down a black market is an extremely important one, and I think we have to consider convenience when you're talking about that. So right now, we have fairly restrictive operating hours, it is difficult for some people to make it to a dispensary during operating hours, given, you know, long commute times, as we saw today. So, you know, perhaps widening that, allowing morning hour, early morning hours before work, so people can stop on their way to work, could be something we look at. I have to say, I, I'm much more squeamish, I guess, right now about allowing consumption on premises. We've seen that with our illegal dispensaries, it causes enormous problems that, yes, may be able to be handled with proper ventilation, but we haven't seen that sort of thing in place yet. There is an idea floating out there that you have separate smoking bars as a separate class of business, much like you have separation between liquor stores and bars today.
Yeah.
And that would come with its own set of regulations. I think it's more important right now in this process to prove to the residents that we can have medical marijuana establishments that have zero negative impacts on the community, and I think that includes, you know, smell and, and, you know, the other issues that come with consumption on premises. And I agree also that we do need to have a number of dispensaries to fit the needs of the market, so that we don't have... of the market so that we don't have, you know, mega dispensaries trying to serve a large number of people. But I would urge that that be a slow rollout rather than, you know, the city just issuing
Gotcha.
licenses willy-nilly.
Yeah, I think we need to have more conversations on that. So let's see if Nate Orita wanted to say anything. I mean, you don't have to, okay? Don't feel compelled.
Yeah, I understand. My thought is that it's really important to eliminate the black market. And it is important that we start with the Prop D compliance and show the neighborhoods that we can effectively enforce existing regulation and make that functional within our community. And I don't think that it is necessarily a good idea to have consumption at the dispensary level. I think there may come the time when the Bud Bar concept is an appropriate alternative or additional segment, business segment for this, but that it is more like a liquor store where you don't combine the usage and the dispersment. And the other thing that I think is gonna be really important in eliminating the black market is the manner in which we approach taxation of the business. Because if you overtax, then you eliminate the incentive to come out and legitimize your operation. So I think, I think you have to be very careful in that approach and that there are probably different levels of taxation. It's a complicated issue and obviously needs a lot of thought, but that is an important issue that needs to be addressed in the process.
Okay, so the measure that I was gonna put on the ballot for 99% taxation, I should maybe wait on that.
That dog won't hunt.
I should stop. That dog won't hunt. Okay, Nate, did you wanna chime in or?
Sure. And I think the idea behind even the Adult Use Act and medical marijuana in California is that the more legitimate marijuana is publicly and legally, the less legitimate the black market is. So while it may be important to continue to put very strong regulations, especially on maybe new dispensaries or businesses that didn't fit under Prop D, I think it's also important to allow people an opportunity to use medically and recreationally. And I think that ties into some of this conversation about use on-site. But I think that maybe is sort of symbolic so that people have a place to go, which is part of the idea with on-site. And then downtown, it's very difficult to smoke, say, in your apartment where it's prohibited with a lot of leases. So then a lot of people would then be smoking on the sidewalks near retail and restaurants, which maybe creates more of a nuisance, which is why it's kinda difficult to think that through. But generally, yeah, generally, the more legitimate we allow businesses to be, and I think the more friendly we are to compliant businesses, the less powerful the black market is.
Okay, thank you. And I hope you guys realize, and hopefully I get to you, little lady man, how important just this 10 minutes of dialogue has been. I think that you educated me. I learned a lot. I'm sure the people that are here learned a lot. And the reason why I reinforce that is because that's why it's so critical that you are engaged. Because we as the, as your public servants, as your employees, we wanna make our bosses happy. And then you have individuals that are sitting behind you that are gonna be running establishments of a variety of, and they wanna make sure that the community is happy as well and that their clients are pleased. So the only way we're gonna come close is to have a real open dialogue like this where people are calm, cool, and collected and just go at it. Mr. Harris Dawson, you wanna jump in for a bit?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I just wanna thank you and your staff for organizing such a good set of hearings around the city and this one here in the valley. It's especially impressive to have someone from San Pedro and downtown who are on time. You got here before me, so.
He spent the night.
Congratulations to you all. And I appreciate your presentations there, pretty thorough. It shows that you all have thought about the issue and talked to your neighbors and had a conversation that wasn't sort of a one-way conversation with only people in the community who were upset about it, or only dispensary operators, or only residents that were supportive. And so I think it's great. For us, this issue provides an opportunity to do, I think, three important things, right? So raise some revenue for important community issues through taxation of business transactions that are going on anyway, right? They're gonna happen, they have been happening and will continue to happen really no matter what we do. So this gives us, allows us to have some taxation. For especially folks in my community, but I think this is true around the city, it gives the opportunity for people who've been living in the shadows, who've been what I call victims of the war on drugs over the past decades, to come out of the shadows, to become part of the legal economy and to have, you know, above-board job just like any, anybody else. And when I hear the term eliminating the black market, I, in my mind, I always say, well, make sure we bring those workers into the, to the light and allow them to become involved. And then third, it allows us to, once and for all, I think, deal with the illegal dispensaries that I think are all over the city and we struggle with them all over, over the place. With regard to the, I want to go back and see if you all had done any thinking about this. I think this might become a point of controversy later. With regard to the black market, there're gonna be people who have a history in, that might have gotten them arrested at one point or another in their life. And so for the exact same activity that they would be proposing to do now. And so one of the things that may come up is, well, in order to get licensed to work at one of these places, you can't have a record, right? So I wanted to know, is this an issue that's come up in your discussions? Is it something that you've seen in the dispensaries that you've been in communication with? And if so, you know, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, actually, it's something that I had an interesting discussion with some of the dispensary owners about. We certainly don't want to compound the injuries that were brought on people who were victims of the war on drugs. And I don't personally see any reason why we couldn't, you know, open that up quite a bit. I think we might wanna draw some lines when we're talking about violent offenses. But, you know, someone who's arrested for possession, I honestly, I see no, or small amounts of sales, I don't really see as being a threat to the fabric of our community.
Okay. Why don't we, is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay. Anyway, and that's something that is moving forward. We're gonna, in fact, Andrew, kinda jot that down. As we move forward with our hearings, we may wanna set up a group of folk that could come in and be a panel that deal with that issue. So I'm gonna ask you to stay for a bit. We're gonna try to get, start on our public comment. So I want John Jenkins, Marvin Moskowitz, is it Bob Pepper Mueller, Daniel Alfari, just come on. The quicker you get to the mic, the quicker everybody speaks. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is John Jenkins. I started The Vapor Spot seven years ago in 2010. We have four Los Angeles Vapor Spot locations. I employ about 40 people for L.A. My business is a vapor bar where we demonstrate the technological advantages of a smoke-free lifestyle. Lots of new small businesses like vapor bars and coffee shops await a licensing procedure which would enable them to sell very small amounts of cannabis, say a gram or less. This is for personal on-site consumption. Not large distribution, but a single-serving size of cannabis. Think of perhaps a coffee along with a little balloon full of vapor on a lazy Sunday afternoon. How can we create these types of businesses quickly and provide the public what it's demanding? In all this talk of large-scale operations, dispensaries, it'll be this cannabis micro-business model for Los Angeles that will be looked to across the nation.
Thank you.
Many vibrant new types of jobs created.
Thank you. Thank you. You know what? Send us something on that. And we'll have, I just have so many people, if I have more time, we'll go back around.
Just let's go first. We're experts in public.
But I got you, I got you. But let me bring in Marvin. Marvin?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And come back and visit us again. Yes, sir.
I'm Marvin Moskowitz. I'm a current marijuana patient in North Hollywood. We know that thousands of people every year die from alcohol, tobacco, and pharmaceutical opiates. We know of no that none of, that have ever died from marijuana. And yet, we have onerous restrictions on marijuana sales that do not apply to sales of those other substances. It's offensive to me that, as said by your council member from South Robertson, I can only buy my medicine between 10 and 8, where an alcoholic can buy his till 2, and somebody on opiates can get his from a 24-hour Walgreens. Please, when considering your zoning, make recreational marijuana zoning no more restrictive than those for liquor stores. You don't have three liquor stores on every block. You shouldn't have marijuana, but you should have equal opportunity. No more restrictions for marijuana than for pharmacies.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So let's, let's have, let's have Bob. Good to see you again.
Hi. I'm representing myself instead of my two neighborhood councils. My main worry here is that we were trying to create a giant bureaucracy when we really don't need to. We should be pattering all, pattering, I can't pronounce the word.
We know where you've been.
Yeah. After the alcohol and tobacco regulations that are currently out there, instead of doing something that's completely separate and encouraging more of the black market stuff with overzealous regulations and things like that. We've been, under the false information from way back in the 1930s from a guy named Anslinger, who's totally, to save his job, started this whole fiasco what is currently existing. In summary, here's what I would like to see. If, if.
Wrap it up, Bob.
If Martin Fine can sell alcohol and tobacco, they can also sell marijuana with no extra restrictions.
Got you. Bob, tell them what neighborhood councils you're associated with.
Well, I'm associated with this East Hollywood and Midtown North Hollywood.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, they started a lot, though, Bob, back in the 30s. Anybody ever seen Reef of Madness? Lord, it was just on last week. Anyway, so I need Daniel, and I'm looking for David Kurtman, and my man Tomar. And Hal is here, so you guys come on, so we save some time. Yes, sir.
My name is Daniel Alfari. I'm a resident of Los Angeles since 1978, educated in L.A. Unified Schools, and I graduated from Southwestern Law. I'm here on behalf of Super Premium Cannabis, a startup micro-business cottage boutique brand that envisions providing top-quality cannabis and cannabis products for adult use. To ensure top quality, Super Premium expert horticulturists will cultivate the plant, chemists will test and synthesize products, chefs will prepare edibles, and professional representatives will educate customers and deliver the product at stylish and inviting retail locations. Only by controlling all levels of the supply chain can Super Premium guarantee to their customers and the community that all organic products are organic and all plants are grown in California by Californians. Adult use should be planned for and permitted separately and distinctly for medical use. The two vary in regulation, taxation, compliance, and are governed by separate statutes. It would be unfair for medical facilities.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, when you hear the deep, you guys gotta go quick. You gotta close. Okay, yeah, hey, what's up, man?
My name is Tomar Graziani. Thank you very much for having everyone here. I would like to talk a little bit more about public consumption and the idea that public consumption is people in a dispensary smoking cannabis. Well, it's not gonna be the case. I don't think it needs to be the case. Under Prop 64, it's illegal to smoke cannabis anywhere outside. So if people, tourists, are coming over, they wanna go to a hotel, they need to have the opportunity to smoke at the hotel. There's other places where you can incorporate public consumption. For example, spas that may wanna offer treatments with cannabis creams, a yoga studio that may wanna offer an adult cannabis-friendly class. And the only way that those people will be able to do it is through a micro-business license that allows on-site consumption. And I really think that it can help grow more types of businesses and really show cannabis as a community-friendly place where it's not a bunch of people smoking at a shop, but people enjoying the true benefits of cannabis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Tomar, hold on.
Just, just kinda riffing off your point, I'm just curious, maybe staff knows the answer to this. Does Prop 64 leave openings for however it is we license cigar bars?
It does?
The two, from my understanding, the two ways of public consumption is either a dispensary license or a micro-business license that they would allow for consumption on-site. And a place like a hotel would need to apply for a micro-business license.
Okay. All right. Hal?
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. My name is Hal Lewis, and welcome to my side of the hill. I was born and raised in North Hollywood. I, you know, I'm dealing with this L-050 thing that we talked about once before.
Yeah.
There's 176 L-050 pink sheets. We did a little bit of an investigation. We found 10% of those so far are illegals. They actually misrepresented themselves on the affidavit that they turned in to the city. So my question is, how are we gonna deal with this issue? Because there's some good actors and there's some bad actors, and we can't have them just under property pre-I C O. I've been involved since 1978 in this industry when I lost both my mom and dad to cancer.
Sorry to hear that.
So I take it very personally that I only have eight to 10 patients. I have a cease and desist order, even though I've been paying my taxes under the L-050 and the B O E. I don't have a big shop. We go home visits two people, basically, which is illegal in the city. And I know I could be arrested for that right now. But I have retirees that need help.
Okay.
And this is my major point. So I apologize.
Thank you. Man, don't apologize. These hearings are so you can come and say whatever the heck is on your mind. Okay, so is this David? So after David, I want Jackie Subic and Jessica from Canoga Park Neighborhood Council. I remember, yeah, I was just there. And after you, we have Lisa Sarkin. Yes, sir.
Hi. I worked on Prop 64, and I'd like to applaud the city council for what they're doing right now.
Hey, thank you. We'll take it.
That's right.
We don't get many applause. We'll take it. In fact, wait a minute, I'll pull out my phone and record it, all right? Go ahead, Dave.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I've been to city councils all over the state. Few city councils are sticking their necks out on this issue like L.A. is. This is a make or break moment. The current system encourages federal raids. Less regulation means less protection for those businesses. The state is watching, by extension, the nation is watching, to see what L.A. does, whether they get this right. There's a huge opportunity for restorative justice and to put L.A. in the center to be the most inclusive and diverse market. This is a historic moment, and five to 10 years from now, you're gonna be looking at this and being proud of what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So if I could get the next speaker. Good to see you too.
Hello, I'm Jackie Subic. Thank you for having us tonight. I wanna quickly touch on two topics. The first one is equity, a topic you've heard about a lot. As it relates to echo some of what my other colleagues have said with the L-050s, I just don't feel that it's been fair and it's not putting you guys in a good place. It's not a good start. And I know that Los Angeles has the opportunity to really be fair in this, but by issuing some L-050s a pink slip and other ones a cease and desist, I just don't think that's fair. So I just wanna put that down. The second thing is on-site consumption, also echoing what Tomar said, for example. We're gonna need easy access to on-site consumption licenses. This should be something that is not difficult. This should be something that, as long as the business is vetted, we're able to get an on-site consumption license. I mean, even for a live event, I do a lot of live events, I'm gonna wanna be able to have that license. How am I gonna get that? Maybe it's not tied to the micro-business license, but it is just its own city license that I can acquire. So thank you.
No, thank you. Jessica, good to see you. Come on. And, um, and Lisa, oh, she's coming up.
Thank you for having me here, President Wesson. I also volunteer at the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, but I'm not here to represent them. I'm here as a mom. My name's Jessica Arias. And I know, I heard, I didn't hear anything about this that is very important for the people that have cancer. But my concern is about the children, because, you know, like tobacco and, and alcohol, it's been, it's been legalized, but also the marijuana has been legalized. The childrens get hands on this too, especially that teenagers. So my concern as a mom, how are we gonna stop this? I know we, we take good care of our children, but sometime, you know, this is lip. And I also work at the hospital, and I see kids knocked out. We, they, the paramedics bring them to ER, and they don't even know what, what they smoke. So it's different kinds of marijuana, so I just wanna make sure, are they gonna be, uh, going to jail if they get, uh, uh, driving under the influence?
Thank you. Well, see, there's a lot of, Jessica, there are a lot of, uh, questions. And like I always say, that this is the beginning of this process. Maybe the next hearing, I can ask some of the industry folk to come up and kinda respond to some of your concerns. It was brought up here, how we, you know, deal with people underage and, and, and what have you. So your concern is one that I'm sure is a citywide concern and one that I'm certain we'll be having a conversation about. Give my best to Madam President of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council. Yes, Lisa?
Lisa Sarkin, I'm, I'm the former land use committee chair for the Studio City Neighborhood Council. And we dealt with an issue of nineteen dispensaries in a three-mile, um, length of Ventura Boulevard, which really was really bad. But my, my biggest issue is, okay, don't complain. I'm highly allergic, so the smoke gives me the biggest headache. So we have to, smoking isn't allowed in buildings, so I think you have to be incredibly careful of what happened. And even though I believe what happened in Oakland was because of a faulty, maybe refrigerator or whatever, my cousins were at a big rave the last week, and there was smoking allowed. Everybody was doing whatever they wanted, and, I mean, there could have been a huge fire from that too. Liquor doesn't create that kind of an issue, but every, and-
No, 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 no. Wait, wait, wait. Hold tight. Hold her time. Hey, hey, no, 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 no. Hey, I wanna tell you now, shh. When a person, hold on, Lisa, when a person gets up here, that's their minute, okay? That's, that's their time. So let them say what they wanna say, and, and, and I, there are people who are sensitive to smoke and things of that nature. Lisa, just go on, finish your statement. Listen, I'll be respectful to you. You guys, let's be respectful to everybody that comes up to that center aisle, okay? That's, that's all I'm asking. Yes, Lisa?
Driving under the influence is driving under the influence, but there are extra things that affect people from the marijuana that you need to take into account.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so now, uh, Daniel Sosa, Oliver, is it Oliver Summers, Dee Dee Chin? I have another Daniel. Is that the same Daniel? C-C-C-D-C? So anyway, identify yourself.
Uh, my name is Daniel Sosa. I'm the operator and founder of La Brea Collective in District Ten on Pico Boulevard. Also, um, on the board of Glaca Greater Los Angeles Collectives Alliance, which is a part of the Southern California Coalition.
It's good to see you again. He's a regular.
I'm also on the Pico Neighborhood Council for four years. I just wanna say I'm really happy that we're here discussing this. And on the topic of onsite consumption, I think it's definitely important to consider. I think it's important to consider in the Prop D compliant dispensaries. The reasons it's important to consider, a lot of people have children, parents, a lease that may not allow them to medicate, um, at their home or their apartment. And we also don't want people medicate, encourage people medicating in their vehicles. I think it's important to, uh, give priority licensing for the property compliant collectives, the ones that have been complying with all of the rules since two thousand and seven. And thank you.
Thank you. In fact, you know, to our panel, uh, when you guys go back and, and have conversations with your neighborhood councils, I hope you're kinda jotting down a note here and there, because I think that's a legit conversation where it relates to, you know, youth and, 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 and what, and what have you. So that's, uh, we really could use input from you guys on something like that. Yes, sir.
How are you?
Good.
Well, that continues up my point. My name is Oliver Summers. I've been fighting for medical cannabis in Los Angeles since two thousand and four or five. I went to my first city council meeting. I've been working with Doug and Andrew. I get your Christmas card every year, sir. And, and, um, basically what I'm hearing today is a lot of the same old rhetoric. I opened my first club in two thousand and six. I lost it to the DEA. Second club I had, I had for nine years, and you know who I lost it to? Goldman Sachs. And you know what? That's who's coming, guys. You're all talking about zoning and consumption onsite and stuff like that. It's great. It's all written in our MMRSA. It's all written in the OMA paperwork. It's all there for you. What isn't there for you is the fifty phone calls I get a day from millions of dollars of investors trying to buy into Los Angeles. I've worked too damn hard, not going anywhere. These other guys in here, there's about a handful of us, we've been fighting side by side for years. I'm sorry, I'm going over for a second, because you have to understand the money that's coming in, sir.
Oliver, I got it. I can't let you go, but so far. No, 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 Oliver, just hold for one second, man. I hear you, and I understand you. We have just begun these conversations. I don't, to me, this isn't, you, eh, you can believe it's rhetoric, that's fine, 'cause I know how emotional you are and others, I get that. But this is not about rhetoric. This is about trying to figure out a way to deal with these things. We, we're gonna have to have conversations about the big folk coming in here trying to take that over. We just can't have a conversation where we address all of that in one night. So anyway, Oliver, thank you. We're not, Oliver, we're not going back and forth. I'm just saying, Oliver, 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 you're not doing yourself any good. We're not going back, back and forth, Oliver. Oliver, Oliver, thank you. Thank you, Oliver. Oliver, thank you. Guys, we can, we can't, we're not gonna be able to talk about everything in one night, but we're gonna do enough of these so that, that we can do as much as we can. And that, I give you my word, that that's what we are going to do. So, Ms. Chin, yes?
My name is Dee Dee Chin. I'm the manager of Hollywood Dispensary for a long time, pre-I C O, property compliant. And I'm, I'm very glad that everybody's doing all these regulations and they're writing up beautiful things, and that's great. But it's only going to work when you, somebody has to close down all the illegal dispensary. According to Board of Equalization Auditor said, illegal dispensary report as zero sale, zero sale for two and a half years, and then they close the company and, and so on. So all these regulations, the government may not collect the right tax amount revenue if you let them operate. So I think that's the most important part, that you have to close down all the illegal dispensary. They are already operating as a recreational. They let everybody in. And that's number one.
I got you.
And then, uh, number two is, I think my- Thank you.
Finish your sentence. Finish your sentence. Just finish your sentence, quick.
Oh, and-
Number two.
Number two is, um, there is going to be a ballot in March. I don't have a time, but everybody should read it at the end. And every, every, every part is going to be superseded.
Thank you. Okay, so now, in fact, what did she say that I wanna, made me think about something? It'll, it'll come back. Okay, so, Daniel? Okay, now I'm looking for Rob, Robin Shirley. Virgil, I thought I saw you earlier. Virgil Grant. Is it Natan Malinger? Please come forward. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Lee. I wanna thank you guys for being here and listening to all of us and our stories. I just wanted you guys to think about, uh, just how the different Prop Ds and the different ordinances came about and in their order. Because a lot of times I sit in these hearings and I hear about shops that came about later, and they're fighting for their right to apply, and I'm an open-the-market guy, and I hope everybody gets a chance to apply and has a fair chance, if they, you know, did their application properly, getting a license. But I do think certain shops, like the ones that have been in compliance, the Prop Ds should get first priority. And I do believe that shops that, let's say, were pre-I C O but saw some negative things happen in their city at that time, was saying, oh, you should shut down, those ones that got shut down because they were listening to what the city said shouldn't be penalized. And these ones that, these ones that stayed open and now, because they did what wasn't told, are benefiting? That doesn't make much sense.
Now, I get you, and, and there needs to be a mechanism where we can go out and really close somebody down. But I hope that you guys are really listening to the people that are not in the industry and speak to some of their concerns. 'Cause we haven't quite, you know, everybody comes up and I, I hear you, you know, let's do this and do that, and all of that is fine. But I tell you, the one way that we can come up with something that makes sense is you guys need to factor in their concerns. And I would like to see some responses to some of the things that you heard tonight when we come back at our next, uh, hearing. So I'm hopeful that you will take note of what some of the folks said here. And the next time we meet, I'd like to hear your opinion on what could happen with this new presidential administration, and what kind of effect do you think that could have? So I, maybe next time we meet, that could be part of our conversation. So please, uh, uh, let me hear your thoughts on that. So, please, come on forward. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Robin Shirley. I'm a nutritionist to patients with chronic pain, and I also do grief counseling for them. I've seen a lot of patients who are in extreme, extreme pain from their disease, and medical cannabis has helped them a great deal. So on their behalf, I would just like to thank you all for being so patient with each other and working together and listening to both sides of the story, because, um, we can only move forward. We can't take this medicine away. And it's not fair to people in this market to keep it illegal as it has been before this recent election. So, uh, I just wanted to express some concerns from people in the industry. A lot of people, um, want to be growers or cultivators, retailers, and, um, people in production because they want to control the quality of their product. And I would really like to see some movement towards, um, information about number of licenses, vertical integration, and the cost of those licenses.
Yeah, we need to get there. We, I, I hear you. Thank you. We need to get there, and that, these conversations will help us get there. Come on, Virgil, and then Natan, and then, uh, David, uh, Rokella? And somebody, is it, is it Cooney? Go ahead, Virgil.
Good evening. My name is Virgil Grant. Uh, I'll address a few concerns.
Go ahead.
Uh, starting with number one, sensible regulations is what's gonna help the industry. That works good for the community as well as the cannabis community. Licensing, that makes a very clear definition of what it is, black or white licensing. Third of all, enforcement, and enforcement behind the sensible regulations and the licensing system. Uh, I want people to understand that pre-I C O means just that. It supersedes Prop D. That's why you've had all of these, um, legal issues regarding, uh, Prop D and pre-I C O. That's why you see the mess that you see. Also, I wanna address the barriers to the industry as far as people coming in. And I recommend the, uh, council community, uh, to communicate with the Southern California Coalition. We can educate you greatly on this industry, and so much more that I, thank you.
You know what, Virgil, might not be a bad idea to have some of the organized, uh, the cannabis organizations should reach out to the, uh, if you can't reach out to the, the neighborhood councils directly, reach out to the associations like, uh, Langs, Lang Bank, and all of those, and get, get engaged in, in that conversation. So, uh, did you wanna jump in quickly, uh, Matt?
I just wanted to mention that the Southern California Coalition has, uh, been very open with, with me in particular, and I think with all the neighborhood councils, so thank you.
The more we talk, the better things are, folks. So let me get the next, next person. Come on. Identify yourself, sir.
Uh, my name is Natan Malinger, and, uh, I've been working with managing consulting collectives on legal regulation of, uh, use of dispensaries for the past seven years. Uh, we worked with clubs in downtown Los Angeles, the Art Sister Healing Center, and we did programs like graffiti cleanup where we would, uh, offer patients, uh, medicine for free if they would do proof of cleaning up, uh, their neighborhood. So programs like this could actually be a huge benefit for the, uh, for the communities. And also think about not, uh, having huge taxes so much as, uh, creating community benefits and, and choosing quality over quantity of dispensaries. That it's really important that we nurture the right types of, uh, of, uh, use indoors, or not indoors, but, um, in, in the facilities. And, uh, that we be transparent with our, our use of the taxes and that have community benefits. And, uh, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker, come on forward. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Good evening, uh, Council President Wesson. Great to see you all, um, and, and commission or, or, uh, committee. My name is David Rokello. I'm the president of Rampart Village Neighborhood Council, which is in the northeast corner of your neighborhood council, councilman. And, uh, uh, just wanted to come here to let you know that I'm very impressed with this kind of speaking tonight, this, these issues, and the fact that so many neighborhood councils have come out instead of watching hairspray. We're out here in the middle of Van Nuys, and we're discussing this. This is a very important issue on the neighborhood council level, and I would like to see in the future, whatever regulations there are, but I would like to see where there are neighborhood council participation in this whole process. And, because it really is up to the neighborhood. Do you wanna, do you want a dispensary in your neighborhood or not?
Yeah, David, and, and I don't think I need to, to say how much I support the neighborhood council, uh, councils. I've been trained-
Well, I definitely see that tonight.
I've been trained by Doug and so many others, and I recognize, uh, the council's worth. That's why it's so important to me that you guys be engaged, because the more you're engaged and more other people in the community see that you're engaged, it's gonna help us recruit other people to participate in the neighborhood councils. It's gonna give the neighborhood councils, in my view, additional clout. It's going to put us where we had hoped we would be when this was first approved by the voters. So I agree with you, and I will continue to do beg, borrow, plead to try to get participation from the neighborhood councils.
I only wish that other issues were as well talked about as this one.
We'll get there. We'll get, amen. What you gotta do, you have to find mo-
Well, that's why I'm here tonight.
You have to find these moments and take advantage of them, and then you spread them. Trust me, I got a plan.
Is it land use? Is it public safety?
There's a method. There's a method to my madness.
I'm trying to figure out where, what, what category and what I should name the new, uh, committee that we're gonna have.
You guys figure it out. Cooney, followed by Patrick, uh, is it McMahon, or, I thi- that might be it. I'm just getting tired. Erica Boninventura, and, oh, there she is. I wondered. Kat, come on down. Kat Parker, Packer. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ed Cooney. I hear a lot of the talking from the councils about the dispensaries and how many to have, where to place them, whatever. But that's a really small part of the industry. And, uh, you talk about wanting to reduce the black market. Well, for one thing, I think you're never gonna kill the black market in any industry. I can't make a DVD player if I can go buy one for twenty bucks in the corner. But you can affect the black market by allowing cultivators their due process into it. You can, with the cultivators, you don't have foot traffic. You don't have people hanging around. The location I'm looking at is right next to a police station. It's about as secure and tranquil as it gets. But the loss of the L-050s, not being able to pay taxes and thus not being able to participate with the medical side from now until 2018, is really gonna concentrate the power in the dispensaries that can operate. So we just need to show a little more love to the cultivators, giving them a path to, um, enter the market.
Okay. And let me, you know, Ed, you made me think about it. If anybody has any ideas, write a letter, send it- If anybody has any ideas, write a letter, send it to my office, send it to Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson or Mr. Weezer, send us all a copy, let us know how you feel. Maybe we incorporate that at our next hearing, or maybe we ask the city staff to respond to that. So, you know, I can't promise we're gonna give you everything that you want, but at least you want to reach out to us, we'll try to get the, whatever answers we can get. So yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good evening, Chairman Weston. My name is Patrick McMahon. I appreciate you saying my name correctly.
Hey, hey.
I am the co-founder of PS Ventures and the OG Collective. We are one of the first licensed multi-use facilities in Southern California. We obtained a license for cultivation, dispensary, and delivery in Cathedral City. My home, however, is in Venice Beach. Our company would like to expand into Los Angeles under the protection of a city license, and we look forward to having that opportunity. We hope that you develop a merit-based application process that will allow the legitimate operators like myself to bring credibility to the cannabis industry. We hope giving priority to pre-Ico operators, operators will not create the open market environment that the city needs. Most of these dispensaries have been sold and transferred from the original operators. Therefore, being open since 2006 has no value. I can also tell...
Finish last sentence.
I can also tell you firsthand that the majority of pre-Icos do not operate under Prop D regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Erica, followed by Kat, and then is this Harmony Raymond? Yes?
Hello, my name is Erica Benvenuto, Valley girl, born and raised. I work full-time, I have two children, and I wanted to talk about a couple of things until I get cut off here. First thing I wanted to mention is just, I think, Matt, you were the one that mentioned fear, and a lot of other people I know have that feeling about it, but I think that it's all been brought on by us as a society has created this fear. Like we've heard before, it's okay to have our kids watch us drink alcohol and get completely slushed, but if we should smoke a joint after work because we're stressed out and we don't want to drink, it's frowned upon. I can tell you that I can go out with my PTA moms after school and have a couple of drinks, because that's acceptable. And if I spark up a joint, probably half of those PTA moms usually come around and will smoke it with me. But we don't want to talk about that when we're at school or talking amongst each other in a professional manner. So we need to change the public view on it. And I do appreciate people that have the feeling, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, yeah, the smell, but I also think, oh, okay.
Last sentence, finish it.
I just think that, just to speak on that, the smell is associated with that fear that we've brought on in society. Garlic smells terrible, but we like it because it's good.
I got you. But that's a legitimate, whoa, 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 that's a little, I, I think that's a legitimate concern that other people have, this smell. And I think we're gonna have to talk about it. They, you know, they have the right, and so I think that's a very legitimate concern, but I see where you're coming from as well. And as time goes by, hopefully, we as a people evolve. Lord knows, we need to. Yes, sir.
President Weston, can I just address her concerns really quickly? One of the things our committee's talking about is advocating for parental protection language and the new regulations, and although I understand at the city level it might only be symbolic, parental rights have been overlooked in marijuana policy reform, and it could go a long way in protecting the rights of parents to go ahead and use cannabis that's otherwise legally sanctioned.
Thank you. So Kat, after you, Kat, I need Harmony, Harmony Raymond, and is it Mike, Mark Peisner, and Marilyn, Marilyn? My eyes are fading. Kat, you're from my area, too. I can't make out the last name, but Marilyn from Wilton Place. Okay, Kat.
Hi, my name is Kat Packer. I'm a policy coordinator with Drug Policy Alliance, and I'm focused on the implementation of Proposition 64. While I am thrilled that there are so many people here talking about the establishment of regulations that are fair, to be completely honest, in the state of California, where black people are four times more likely to be arrested and five times more likely to receive a felony, in order for things to actually be fair, black folks would be four times more likely and five times more likely to get a license. But that's not even what I'm asking here. I am asking that the city of Los Angeles develop, and has the opportunity to develop the most robust and inclusive equity program here. And that means that any tax revenue that gets generated really should be going back towards those communities that were most impacted. We know that a marijuana arrest affects education, employment, housing, public benefits. This is where that tax revenue needs to be designated. Thank you.
Thank you. And making sure that individuals from minority areas or economically depressed areas can participate in this business from top to bottom is one of the priorities of this committee. So please, identify yourself, and let's hear what you have to say.
That's hard to follow up her. My name is Harmony Raymond. I'm a owner-operator of LA Bloom. We produce medical cannabis. I really just wanted to speak today about other cultivators or manufacturers that may either be in this room or at home that are afraid to come and speak at some of these meetings. You know, this is a large industry, and a large industry in LA, and a lot of these operators are compliant, they're good faith operators. And I just, I think, you know, when we talk about priority, there are people in, you know, in the industry paying taxes, they don't have a storefront, but they are supplying those storefronts, their cannabis, their, their medicine. So we need to consider, you know, this part of the industry as well, and make sure that they're incentivized, because right now, that area is gray. We need to make sure that, you know, in 2018, when we have C2 sell tracking, that these people are allowed to have a license as well. If not, we're gonna, you know, support the black market, and these individuals will either have to change their industry completely, or, you know, it will create the black market.
And don't feel bad, Harmony, there are a lot of people that don't want to speak after Kat, okay?
Right?
I don't want to speak after her. So, okay, yeah, identify yourself.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mark Peisner. I'm an entrepreneur who's looking to get into the cannabis space, and I just want to speak to the issue that not everything, it's been mentioned a couple times, but not everything is dispensaries. The industry is actually quite large, the licensing structure is, you know, has 17 different licensing classes, and I just want to make sure that as we look at these regulations, that we consider the fact that, that the issues of a dispenser are not the same issues of a manufacturing facility, they're not the same issues of a, of a growing facility. And, and there's a number of licenses here that don't even exist yet, like the distributor license, and so I just, I think the committee has a lot of work to do...
Yes, we do.
To figure out how all this is gonna come together, but I want to make sure that it is an open and fair playing field, so that new entrants can come into the industry, that we promote the basis of our economy, which is free competition, and let people go out there and try and produce the best possible product for the consumers.
Thank you, and be sure we're gonna do the best job that we can.
Thank you.
Okay, so after Marilyn, I'd like Joe, is it Joe Kyle, and Albert, Albert from Grant, I can't make that, Albert, Albert, I just got your card, and after you would be Mr. Spindler. Yes?
Good evening, Chairman Weston. My name is Marilyn Wiltshire, kind of like Wilshire Boulevard.
Got it.
My question is, is there any way to provide a list of the legal dispensaries, so we know what dispensaries not to support?
Okay.
And as well, is it possible to provide a visual map of the legal dispensaries, so we also know in what locations, areas, or where, where the spaces are, that maybe there's availability and not? Otherwise, it's very difficult as a person, as myself, I would like to be a dispensary owner, and as a minority, I'd like to be a part of this market that I'm, I'm sure.
But that's a great question, and that's something, Andrew, listen, I don't know when is it appropriate to try to sort all of that out, but that's a legit question. And what we want to do is try to come up with mechanisms, so individuals, small businesses will have an opportunity, or entrepreneurs will have an opportunity to get into the business, you know, mentoring programs, internship, internship programs, whatever it takes. So, you know, know that Mr. Weezer, Mr. Harris-Dawson and I are very sensitive to those issues, and I appreciate you coming all the way out to the valley.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could have next speaker? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Joe Kyle. I went to court, or attended the Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting last night, basically about this exact same thing, regulations. But the, there's a lot of people there that were worried about, exact same worries that were brought up here, driving under the influence, just death from car accidents, smell, all those things. Our county has a phrase, come on, come on vacation, leave on probation, and we have a very high DUI, we have a wet and reckless .04. But, so when you look at numbers from the AAA, they just put out a recent study that states that the medic, the values that were adopted in Washington, the five nanogram limit, have no scientific merit, that it's a case-by-case basis, and it needs to be that you're approving impairment, you're not saying that above this is, you're impaired. It's not like alcohol, it's, it needs to be looked at as a case-by-case basis. And I like to say as well, that the, the death from car accidents and the numbers people are pulling, like my DA sent a letter to every single one of our city members, that said that the people that are...
Finish it.
That are testing positive for cannabis in Colorado, those numbers are not being compared to previous numbers, or, they are, but it's what tested for cannabis before, not the overall amount of car accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm assuming you're Albert? Come on up.
Hey, thank you, good evening. I'm sorry for writing so sloppy.
No problem.
You know, I...
I couldn't read it if it was, just don't worry.
No, you know, I, I really want to encourage the city to engage in a meaningful dialogue around retail operating practices for these establishments, and really ensure equitable distribution of the dispensaries, and also fully empower neighborhood councils to participate in the oversight and monitoring of these dispensaries. I think at the grassroots level with community, it really is important to take lessons learned from, you know, the alcohol retailers and their negative impact on communities, and really carry that over and learn our lessons, and fully empower our communities to participate in the oversight and, and regulation. I think that's definitely gonna be key, and just one last thing, we really can't afford to be confused around the black market. You know, legalization isn't gonna eliminate the black market, and that is what it is, and I think we need to do what we can on the community side to reduce youth access and availability. But I think the more we involve the grassroots community and fully empower our neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I tell you, you can't, you cannot have this conversation without seriously talking about ways to at least limit, fight, or whatever, where it relates to the black market. You just can't say that we can't deal with it. Yes, sir?
So, yes, now, we're going to legalize marijuana, yay! Now, no taxes on medical use, exempt the people with the doctor letters from any of the taxes, and on the recreational use, let the operators operate well into the night, make it like 10:00 AM to 4:00 AM, because you see a lot of people that use marijuana, a lot of times use it quite late and need it past 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, you know what we mean, yes. So this is going to be a very fun puppet show, because Trump is going to put in a crazy man named Jeff Sessions, he's going to fly to Los Angeles and prosecute everybody, yay! So we're gonna have a lot of fun in 2017. Thank you.
Okay. Please, do not humor him, okay? Now, I want to thank the panel, I want to thank all of the folk that came tonight, I really want to thank the city staff, and I hope you appreciate that these folks are not getting any additional salary or anything like that. They're, they're coming because they are public servants, and they know that it's easier when we have hearings in the evening, so folks can come and, and give their opinion and state their views. So I'd be, I do appreciate you giving them a round of applause, and I hope everybody has a happy holidays, and when we come back, we will continue this process, and be sure we are learning a lot. Thank you all so very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks.